Good evening, I will call the October fourteenth Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order, it is now six forty-five. And welcome to the meeting of the Board of Education, it's not a meeting for everyone here, but it's for the board to conduct their business. So we'll go ahead and get started and we will, if you would rise with me for the pledge of allegiance and we'll use the flag right here by the door.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if we can have a roll call please, Secretary Slager.
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Shoffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we have established a forum for tonight's meeting. And that brings us to the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. That brings us to gratitudes portion of our meeting, and I would open it up to the board tables to share.
I have one, I'll take this off, like to give a shout out to the middle school for holding conferences tonight, I know they're meeting with parents and kids and yeah. I just want to thank them for all their hard work and thank the kids for learning well.
I think we saw a lot of cars at trails too. So I think, yeah, so it's definitely.
Sorry, only metal school. Maybe tracks.
Alright, I received a nice compliment and I'm grateful for that, the Red Flannel Crafts, the crafters were excited for the extra room and the very nice crowd that they had during Red Flannel Day. So to us for hosting.
I also heard some good compliments about that. I also am grateful for the opportunities that the high school provides, all the high schoolers. My son goes to school obviously, but then he has so many extracurriculars, we barely see him anymore, so. And I think it's going to serve them well next year when he goes to college, they'll have a lot under his belt.
Yeah, I'm grateful for the all the hard work that our students and staff are putting in in the classroom. And also thankful for the work and the productivity that's taking place at Beach with our construction site, those contractors are doing an outstanding job, getting us ahead of schedule. And with our tour this evening, Mike Breckin shared that they anticipate having a roof on the second, the two-story addition by Christmas, which will enable them to, you know, have that space weathered in and then really be able to make progress over the next six months to put us on a good place for another worker working inside, so it was very good.
Nice to see some of the things we've approved from the board table in action, some of the furniture placements and different things.
Yeah, we were able to see two classrooms, four classrooms that were completed. And then seeing other classrooms and other spaces of the building in various stages from dirt floor to somewhat finished rooms, it was a, it was a good tour.
Okay, thank you. And coming up, we have the high school representatives, if you'd like to join us at the podium and introduce yourselves and share what's going on.
Hi, I'm Haley. And we're both juniors. So our school is hosting a leadership conference on the twenty-third. There's going to be many other schools coming into our auditorium to learn how to become better leaders and of their schools as well, as well as ours. This will include our athletic leadership, student voice and student. And then we have a harvest festival planned for the sixth of October and we have that all set and ready to go. And there's going to be a form which I said in the bell. And then we have a charity event planned for November and that's still in workings, but yeah, so as she said, we're still brainstorming that, we haven't really got a set idea yet, but we're working on it. And then we would also like to offer all of you guys an invitation to the harvest.
I saw some, something on social media, so that was good, hand out there.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds fun, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we're to our consent items and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Landing at our discussion items, we begin with the FCC cybersecurity pilot program. And with Colin presenting.
Alright, so what we're looking to do, and kind of our broader plan presented through last year. The FCC is currently running a pilot program to include more cybersecurity focused items into the standard grade program. So what we want to do in joining them that is we're getting that shed fire to replace our current one. So our current one's about five years old. If we get accepted into the absence of a program, you'll get a standard rate discounts where we would pay thirty percent of the total price, including licensing installation and everything. Which with that seventy percent discount will bring us about between ten thousand five hundred dollars and twelve thousand dollars for a firewall. Until it goes to a proper paid process through that E-rate program, we won't want the exact price. With the pilot program called that's different than the standard period program. Once we submit the application, if we are accepted, we must continue the program, there is no option of that. There's not really downsides to that, other than that we would be on the hook for the ten to twelve thousand dollars. And we are required to keep reporting for the pilot program over the next three years. Reporting will be pretty simple, they don't have the exact layout that they're going to do public yet, but they are they're planning towards to be very similar to the application. So what you need to file or how does it affect the students, how are you utilizing, how does that does security of your network, things like that. So we're just looking for basically if we were to continue forward and actually apply, the deadline is actually very close to the end of this month. The one that is, which is at back out once we submit our application, if we are approved, means the program, you must continue forward. If we do that, we could look at losing part of the inventory.
And if we're not approved, we're not.
If we're not on anything, there's no downside to applying, if we're not approved.
And that ten thousand to twelve thousand, that's for the three years, or is it per year?
It would be before the three years, so in our bid, we would just specify that we want physical hardware appliance plus three years of licensing. So we don't have to touch it during this period.
And at the sunset of that three years, we could decide to take another avenue, we're not on the hook for ten to twelve thousand in perpetuity, it's just for that three-year window.
Correct, and we would actually, if we are moved into the pilot program, getting our firewall clients, and at the end of that three year, that is our clients, we keep it. We will still be responsible for licensing forward, that's what our firewall is about.
And the primary benefit is the thirty percent discount.
The prime, so we're doing a little bit of head of schedule because of this pilot program, and the main benefit is we only pay thirty percent and the FCC will pay our seven percent of the total price paid. And it just helps with our general security infrastructure, this is what our primary defense against internet threats are, this runs our VPN, this runs some content filtering. I called this morning, just kind of see a rep on our VPN loan, which this appliance run, we see about ten thousand attempts to break into the month. So that's something we want to keep up to date, we want them to be secure, we want to maintain property.
And if approved, the twelve thousand dollars is less than the order group threshold required, or approval threshold. But if it's not approved, this is something that we would be bringing to you in the near future for consideration at the thirty-five to forty thousand dollar range, which at that threat level, it does require for approval. So we wanted to get this in front of you, so have new the steps we're taking now to protect our, our network. And if we're not approved, we'll bring it back for further discussion at a later date.
Just wondering, say, around IT, I'm probably going to sound really unintelligent, but I'm sure the threat profile continues to change, but how long do we expect a firewall to serve the district without need to be upgraded?
So if we were to go with the same model that we have currently, just be upgrading the version of it, there is no current end of life. We would look to realistically at least seven years, but it depends on what the company decides, a lot of things. They will extend it past that seven year, but with the clients that we're looking for, historically speaking, that company, they've never had something that wasn't supported for it, it's seven years, so. So most likely it will be longer than that, but there's no guarantee.
You have a question? It's not on for action, but we'll see it again the next meeting. Thank you, Colin.
So one thing to note with the application deadline, is there anything specific we'll respond to?
We'll have a meeting on the twenty-eighth, and so they would be able to approve it then.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to discussion item B, the overnight trip request was Scott Smith presenting.
So the next set of agenda items that you have in board book include information on three overnight trip requests. The first overnight trip request is for the FFA group to take a group of four students this year down Indianapolis for their national convention and and their just their, their expo, which is just a really neat experience. Also included is the information for the East Coast trip. And then the third collection of information is on the Costa Rica trip. All three of these trips are trips that you have the boards approved in the past. There, there are no changes to any of the content of the trips. Any homes included, information on the, the costs, their fundraising, all of those things that students who are interested in going to Costa Rica will be presented with at a parent meeting in the near future. So the questions that you may have, I'll do my best to answer them, and if I don't have answers, we can reach out to the teachers and give information for you that way. But we are hoping to get approval on the, on all three trips this evening. Barring any questions or concerns or the board table.
And I did feel comfortable putting it on the agenda as we've seen these before. Any questions or concerns?
I'm just glad that East Coast trip is back, poor Ellie didn't miss out on that because of COVID and like, oh.
And I think it's really cool, the, the FFA is going to nationals, I never had the opportunity to do that, when I was in high school, I had the opportunity to go to state. And state was really cool, ground leadership and the different things, looks like we're competing at the national level in nursery, so it's pretty, pretty cool to have a local team go into nationals to compete.
What do they do, like when they compete, like?
So at the state, I could talk to the state level because I was there, but there's all different, you can, you can do there's a forestry piece where you do a tree identification, there's, there's soil classification, there's orientated, there's all kinds of different competitions within that, there's also a leadership component at the state level where you can do job interview, public speaking, a bunch of other things. And so at the national level, it looks like our group is going down doing nursery.
Yes, yeah.
A nursery competition.
That's great.
So it's, it's similar to like a band festival or science olympiad or robotics where schools from all, in this case, schools from all over the country convene on a location and it's a massive area. And they have, you know, different events, different competitions set up in various locations within the convention center, and then, you know, at eleven o'clock, all the students who are competing in nursery convene to one location, they have their competition. And then at three o'clock maybe in that same location there, there's another group of students competing for a different in a different category, but it's, it's a very, it's, it's a combination of expo where you can go and see things and, you know, they'll have vendors there from all facets of agribusiness. And then also the competition to go side by side, and they have fun, like there are a lot of really fun events for the students to participate in as well.
It's nice.
It's a very positive, very positive event for students to attend. And it's neat for them to be able to connect with kids from all over the country, which is cool.
They compete with some kind of neat things, like even parliamentary procedure, so Robert's rules of orders, like the structure of our board meeting, how we view the public comment, rest of it. They go through, there's a parliamentary procedure competition, there's more to it than what you'd even think, it's not necessarily, some of it's a hands-on piece, and then it's kind of the leadership, it's a new experience.
Maybe they can come in like afterwards, maybe like speak to us or kind of give a little. Awesome.
Alright, thank you. We'll save that on for action, moving on to discussion item C, the twenty twenty-five summer tax resolution with Marty presenting.
As the name indicates, this is an annual summer tax resolution, something that we present to the board every October. We have to take action, the board has to take action and approve this resolution. If we wish to continue to do a one hundred percent summer tax collection, the other option would be a fifty percent summer, fifty percent winter. Cedar Springs has historically done the one hundred percent summer tax resolution, so. Benefit of a one hundred percent summer tax collection is some cash flow. We get one hundred percent of our taxable revenue collected in August, September, start slowing down in October, November. Primary benefit is one, our first day payment does not, is not made until October twentieth on an annual basis, so we'd go one full month without receiving any funds from the state. From a debt service perspective, this allows us to make our November debt service payment without participate, making a school bond loan, loan borrowing. So that lowers our interest expenses related to our debt service. So this is on, just for discussion, we'll have it on for action at, on the twenty-eighth. And then we are required to submit this to our taxing townships and the city of Cedar Springs no later than December thirty-first.
Any questions? Standard. Moving forward, the financial update, Marty stays on deck.
A couple of things just real quick to highlight. Tuesday, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, October second was our two thousand twenty-fourth Fall Count Day. Currently, as of last, sorry, Wednesday, our unaudited count was at three thousand eight point six seven FTEs. The count is still ongoing, it's not just a one-day event, it is a usual about four-week period that we, the count is ongoing. And then once we'll send those numbers to the state, it'll do a final audit and we'll have our audited count. But if, if everything held at that three thousand eight FTEs, our two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school aid membership would be at three thousand fifteen FTEs. So that represents a loss of seventy-eight FTEs compared to last year. But that is eleven FTEs higher than what we projected for the, back in June when we adopted the budget. So a little bit of positive news there. Other major thing to highlight, the thirty-one AA, the school safety and mental health. That categorical, when they passed the twenty-four, twenty-five school aid budget, there was a significant reduction in the funding available for that categorical. They went from three hundred and ten million dollars down to twenty-five million. Since then, they, the legislation legislators have passed a supplemental bill adding an additional one hundred and twenty-five million, bringing the total funding to one hundred and fifty million for thirty-one AA for this current fiscal year. All districts have to do is log into a MBE website to opt in and certify that you will spend it on certain allowable expenses, which include school sites, social workers, nurses, SROs, so student mental health and student school safety and security. And you have to certify that that's what you'll spend the money on, and then June first, submit a final expenditure report. One caveat on this is we probably won't know what our funding is until April. So we kind of have to start spending money now and then you'll get your final allocation. But there's things that we're already planning on funding that would qualify, so we'll just kind of.
It's what we were going to do anyway.
It's work that we were going to do anyway, so. And then they just released the twenty-four, twenty-five competitive bid threshold, that new limit is now set at thirty thousand five hundred and twelve dollars.
What was that limit before?
About twenty-nine thousand five hundred roughly, so.
Not much of a difference.
Not much of a difference.
Easy number to remember.
Any questions?
Good. Okay, thank you. Moving on to discussion item E, the snow removal proposal, if Marty and Vic.
Alright, so for the last ten to twelve years, the district has been using a third-party vendor contractor for the snow removal throughout the district. We've been with the current snow removal vendor since the seventeen eighteen school year. For the past few years, staffing has been a bit of a challenge with, with the vendor, our current vendor, which has made it a challenge for the company to meet the demands of clearing snow throughout a district of our size. As such, the district facilities maintenance team currently supplements the snow removal throughout the district. I checked with Vic earlier today, he would estimate that we currently do probably about twenty-five, thirty percent of the snow removal currently using district staff on the facilities and maintenance team. Due to, due to the staffing challenges in previous winters and concerns about this coming winter, we've made the decision that it would be in our best interest to bring the snow removal back into house and use district staff to complete the snow. So honestly, you know, there, there will be a few things that we need to complete the in-house snow removal. What we're looking to do is convert, we currently have a part-time point five FTE position on the maintenance facilities team. We would look to convert that to a one point O FTE, so a net change of point five FTEs. There is some equipment, additional equipment that we will need to do this, we are in pretty good shape because we have been doing quite a bit, but we would look to purchase a new John Deere twenty twenty-five R compact utility tractor with a snow blower. And then also purchase, or at least preferably purchase a used loader for the heavy removal, including snow banks and clearing our parking lots. Regarding costs, as I mentioned, converting a point five FTE to a full-time FTE, the cost of that full-time FTE is projected to be between eighty-five to one hundred and ten thousand dollars. The one hundred and ten is if that individual were to elect full family healthcare. That's a difference of approximately fifteen thousand dollars between single subscriber and full family. The John Deere utility tractor, we can get ideal pricing, so that's the, the state competitively bid program. So we can get that for thirty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. And we do have a quote attached. We'll be asking the board to take action on that later tonight. At the next board meeting, we'll be asking the board to approve a spending limit of up to fifty thousand dollars on a used loader. We think it'll be more in the range of forty thousand, forty to forty-five, but we want to have, be able, if we find the right one, to be able to take, actively quickly to secure that. Alternatively, we could lease a loader, that's approximately three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars a month to lease. So really, after a three-year period, we would have expended on a lease approximately what we would spend purchasing one outright. Final additional equipment that we need, we need is a loader pusher that goes on the front of that loader for moving the large snow banks. And then obviously, we do have some potential for some overtime with, with our maintenance facility staff. Big stopping, if I'm missing anything as well, so. So overall, the benefits that we, we feel that bringing it in-house would be, is, no, we're taking full ownership of the snow removal. We can hold ourselves accountable. There was one, one day last winter when we did have a no-show, and we were really scrambling to get the snow cleared. If, if it's in-house, we are responsible for scheduling, making sure people are there, and we know that the staffing is there to add, to clear the snow. Also adding the point five FTE, obviously throughout the year, we have that extra set of hands to work throughout the district, doing maintenance, preventative maintenance, and then other projects that as directed by Vic. And then obviously, there's things that the tractor and the loader would allow the district to perform various projects throughout the district that currently we don't have the equipment, equipment to do, but if we had those the tractor and the loader, those would be things that we could capitalize on within the district without hiring out purchase services. So it wouldn't be equipment that just sits idle in the summer, in the spring, we would be able to use it year-round. So projected costs related to this over the past, going back to the seventeen eighteen school year. And I did remove the first COVID year because it was a abnormal year, but going back to seventeen eighteen, we've averaged about eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars in snow removal expenditures. That's, and on top of that, we have been supplementing the, the removal of snow with our cedar staff. The two-year average for last year and the year before was seventy thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So if you add the seventy thousand and then the current cost of the point five FTE, we're roughly at one hundred and six thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. The cost of a full-time FTE, as I said, is roughly eighty-five to one hundred and ten thousand dollars, depending on which healthcare they select. The cost of a full-time F T, as I said, is roughly eighty-five to one hundred and ten thousand dollars, depending on which healthcare they select. So. For slightly more potentially. Uh, we will do the snow removal in-house and have a, an additional point five F T. For the entire twelve months of the year to work on uh, projects throughout the district and obviously, purchasing the equipment. Is, it's not a one-time purchase because stuff does eventually wear out, but it's not something that we'll be purchasing on a annual basis. Uh, we should be able to get some, see them get like out of these. Pieces of equipment.
So, with, with all the putting said about adding a half point five on F T. Right now, we have, the personnel I have are plenty capable of doing more than just what we're doing now at school. Um, we've never been set up so good as what we are now, with people that do flat work, we have bad sidewalks. Uh, with a loader, we cut it out, we pull it, they pour it, um, over the years, I've trained guys to pour concrete through the district. Um, but we really didn't, we don't have all the heavy equipment we need when it, you know, we get, look at like Cedar View as uh. The sidewalks, they're only really ones we have left that are bad. Part of this bond, hopefully we'll get that taken care of, but there's still sidewalks around the high school year, we just did some patch jobs, they're going to pull it off till spring. Um, next fall, if we have a loader, we have the equipment, we'll, we'll take care of those, we'll cut them out, replace them, um. Right now, we stay swimming, let's call it, right, we don't really have time to, to take on projects, you know, um, when the bond's done. We'll go back to our preventative maintenance, but it'd be nice to go past that, you know, preventative maintenance is, it saved us a lot of money over the years. And we push that really hard, but if we can do projects, it'll, it'll bring the cost of sourcing out. Um, and the numbers, you, you see the numbers every day, how much it costs to do it, um, you know, that's, that's what we're looking to do, um. I have huge confidence in the fellows, you know, bringing, bringing it in, the. Accountability on me, right, now I'm someone that I don't know, so if we're not followed and it's not satisfactory, I'm the only one who's waiting, so. Um, and that's, honestly, we'll sleep better at night knowing that we're gonna have our people take care of us. We're crewed in with uh, uh, simple as caretakers, uh, going around our building, that's people, what they think of our buildings now, it's nine day different stuff, um. I think it's the need, snow in, in Michigan, you can't, you can't expect someone to be suited up to do for push. And expecting to have a crusade standing their way towards the snow, it just doesn't always happen, so. The days of twenty eighteen, when I started, I started in like February. Uh, I came in my first day, five, I was four to five, I came in, we had eighteen inches of snow, alright, so we had. February and March, we had snow, we kept going, we kept pushing snow, um, and I didn't understand why. We hired a outside contractor, but my guys were following all day, so, um, so you realize that we do file sidewalks all day. It's, it's, it never goes away, so even though we outsource, we'd still end up, you know, picking up, you know, different parts and pieces. Um, to have someone here, you couldn't afford to have a contractor here twenty-four times, so. That's what I'm asking a lot is, if we, if we get the equipment to, to get it done, um. The uh, overall outcomes, especially when bond's done next summer, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be a ton of project done, getting to go out a lot of stuff with bond that we're gonna clean up. But once that bond done, um, it's game on again, um, we had. We poured concrete for dumpster pads, we tried to do stuff for baseball and dugout a couple years ago, uh, removed the old. Uh, when we tried to remove the old, we really struggled because back in the day, someone put concrete down forty-eight inches, so we ran it equipment full mouth, um. You know, so it, it just makes longevity out of process that's just been done in a week, so. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good bringing in now, it's been a lot. Yes, sir.
Couple wonderings, um, what size loader are you thinking about?
He's, he's. So, I'm not an expert on motors, but I'm looking at a, like a nine oh eight uh, case, uh, much bigger than that, uh, there's a. John Deere, four, 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 eight, and an A, I believe, it's a little bit bigger, but stay away from really big. Um, because the concrete, you know, we don't want to bust concrete, um, that's what we're looking at right now.
To move the, move the piles around after you've blown them.
Yep.
My question, I guess, kind of gets around, if you're looking at one F T, you're looking at two pieces of equipment, so I just was curious, instead of getting the. I'm, I'm assuming that's like the twenty twenty-five, it's probably twenty-five horse tractor, it's kind of smaller.
So that's, we, we have one right now that we run a snow blower on, um, we bought it. This is, we have first, our second full winter, um, so. It's been amazing for us, once, once we, we learned how to use it, so it's a narrow wave wheelbase, bit time all the sidewalks, when. And that ran non-stop on snow days, it's, it's, if you look at all the new, let's use Red Hawk, there's a lot of sidewalks.
Yeah.
So, we don't want to put a truck on it because it doesn't fit between the tearing up the grass and breaking concrete, um. Now that, when we bring it in-house, we look at all the sidewalks, we have that, our else from the hilltop, okay, that. Go north and south, then east toward the pool off port and it stops, we have a sidewalk that goes from the high school all the way up the trails. Um, then we have a sidewalk that goes from the entrance off North Lynn, uh, Oak Drive, which is me called Red Hawk Drive, so y'all know that's coming. So, to the middle school, that's all snowblowed, um, I started, we used the snow, you know, they use the trucks to pile it. And uh, there's a couple of buckles there, so then we ended up making people, you know, upset because. We did a little damage in their, in their drive, there was a lot of damage, and then we had to fix it, um. So that's, all we're doing is mirroring the one we have because we know that it works really well, we've looked at brushes, I've reached out to. A lot of my friends are in all the other districts doing things that I do, so, um, the brushes work great because there's no direction. You know, it blows it off on an angle one way or another, but then you polish the concrete on really cold day, it just turns to ice instantly. Um, there's a lot of people that love the brush, we also have a brush that goes on our other John Deere, um. And we do salt, so last year, we bought a new uh, salter that goes on the dump truck and we run brine tank, so we're running pop loads, they're called. So intersections, I don't know if you know, it's last year, we're always a little wet on our intersection right off the bat because we're throwing brine with salt. Um, that was a purchase that we did a year ago to help with the, you know, maintain the roads a little bit more, um. So, with any more about the tractor?
Yeah, so the reason, so the reason for the twenty twenty-five is because it would fit on the sidewalk versus getting a new ninety horse or something, might do both, but it won't fit on the sidewalk, so that's why you opted for the.
We also use it on fields, so when, like the John Deere we have now, it starts compacting, you know, in fields, softball, baseball. Um, and now we're running four fields all the time, so we have a gator, we can use the drag, but those smaller John Deeres. You know, we have a built-in drag that scuffs it up and can level it out with a screen on the back, um, without. Keep packing it down so you're not using pines to, to draw it back up, um. So, last year, we, we got away from the bigger John Deere we have, um, and we use that to load salt all winter, it's hard for us to use that. In the other buildings because, um, we have two trucks that we load salt in, that we spread with two trucks, and the dump trucks, we go to the colony and they load us at the colony, so now they. We buy our brine from them and we buy our salt from them, so we don't have to have a storage barn of salt and not mixing brine.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
And we have a mechanic on staff who can work on uh, the equipment as well, and we'll store it inside to extend them later.
Yeah, that was the other thing that I said, right, so, um, it's set up now, if you bought a loader, we do a pusher with wings. So we can have a little wider pusher and we can put it inside, longevity on a unit like that, that heated in the winter, instead of always going off cold on hydraulic. Will last us a lot longer anyway, so, um, we're not gonna have crazy hours on it, so in three years, if we decide that, you know, we wanna outsource. Uh, when you're buying at that price point, you can see them all the time, you, you can resell it and lose a couple bucks, you're not gonna lose much. And then you move on, and we're not invested into a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, that we don't know what we're gonna do with, so. At forty, fifty thousand dollars with a loader, you know, and then I, I know we're asking for the tractor, but the tractor's a whole different side of it, so. More than just snow removal, that, that'll also bring us to getting fields ready and, you know, spring prep for, for, so.
No other questions?
You have any questions? It is on for action tonight.
I assume we're not under contract with anyone for this winter already?
Uh, we are modifying the contract.
Okay.
Um, so, the current, we will have, we're currently down one F T and Vic department, so, uh, we will utilize the current provider for two lots. He, the, the owner of the company will be responsible for, he will be the one one.
Okay.
We just had a.
Our contract, there's language in the contract that allows us to terminate or modify, um, if the performance is not up to standard. Our standards, um. Performance is not up to your requirements of the district.
And when does that contract end?
Uh, it's currently, uh, well, we can terminate it at any point, but.
If it's not up to standards?
Yes, but otherwise it'll end at the end of this season, this winter, um, the twenty four, twenty-five winter season, um. So, yes.
So if we did all this, then we wouldn't, we would let it end and we wouldn't worry about those, those two lots, which we also brought in.
Right, the, it, the concern about staffing going into this coming winter is really what kind of. Triggered the, we need to take action. So we don't have any additional no-shows or instances where we have kids arriving and. Parents arriving for the start of school day and we're not there.
We had a great meeting with him today, so you know it's not, there's no hardships or anything with him, so. We're, we're, we're using him to help us make it through this, this winter, and when this winter's done, he's retiring, he's done following, so. He's helping us, we're keeping him rolling through a little bit of it, um, we're being good stewards to him, that it just, you know, um, last year was horrible and he knows that, so. Um, so, yeah, because there was a little bit he could do, and uh. Marty and I sat in a meeting with him a couple weeks ago, and we decided that, um, using a little high breath to get us through this first year, because we're down. You know, one right now, um, and by next winter, we'll be back at full force, um, even if we don't have that half, you know, that half, so. Um, because right now, we're down one and a half, if, you know, to push and, and keep things going, so. We, we set up on a hourly rate with him, um, he's gonna do four or five hours, um, on snowfalls, uh. You know, and we're a lot cheaper than what we were, because he's not gonna have all of his equipment, you know, bringing in, so. Um, he's gonna work for the guys, we're gonna have, uh, the middle school and Red Hawk, and then he'll be on a tech wave. If they need help, then he can help or they can help him, so he's gonna really be just part of us, because they, they all know him already anyway, so. We're going through back, uh, doing a background check right now, gonna be coming back to sign them, what they just wrote up today, so. Uh, we wrote it up today, and when he signs that, there'll be a new background check, we'll have his insurance, um, it'll be just like if you were the contractor, but. Still be a little bit greater, but it's a little closer, that, that helps.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, we'll move forward, brings us to high school L E D conversion. Marty and Vic retain, stay at podiums.
High school L E D.
Alright, um, Battery Plus had come in to audit, changed everything over in high school. The L E Ds, when they, when we first did it, we kind of went into lack of stage a little bit, he was gonna do a little sections, um, but it comes to me that. The last four years, approximately, every year they come in, um, Consumer Power has, has a program, so. They did all the paperwork and they would do, go through and see where we fit in the, in the rebates and, and how well we do, um, this year. We're, we're, we're getting smaller, so it's hard to get the rebates, but we still have the whole high school left, basically, that we need L E D in, so, um. You have that sheet? I don't have that sheet, so, I'm Battery Plus.
Yeah.
Um, so, I'm saving them on the Battery Plus, uh. So now this is what we're doing, this, this is, he came through and walked the whole building, a little over a week ago, did his homework, did his diligence. Um, and came back, the first proposal they came, it really didn't make any sense because we were just gonna spot it out again. Um, so I asked him to, to do the whole school, when he pulls it up, um, you can see on the, on the first page. First page, yeah, so, go back to the other. Other quote, um. Yeah, so on this one, um. So we're at a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. If we were gonna do it all ourselves, change this all over, talking auditorium, um, the gym's already done, but all the other classrooms. And then when we, uh, when he, when he, um, inspected all our rebates, we had seventy-three thousand dollars. In rebates through consumers, um, then we threw on top of that, in that hundred and twenty-two was labor also, if you can scroll back down. So, energy savings, um, in seven point nine seven months. Our energy savings is seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, so, you know, it is an investment that's straightforward, but if you look at. You know, what the cost is, um, we're gonna, we're gonna pay him forty-nine thousand in eight months, we're gonna get that back and then some on our, on our white bills, so. Um, it's a huge savings, um, it wasn't something we were planning on looking at, but when he approached me. And he cobbled it all in pieces, it just, it just seemed right to get it over with now, it will save money sooner than later, so. Um, with the stadium lights that you all generously put through, I'm not alone, I wish I had the numbers on that, but that's crazy, I mean, L E Ds compared to what we were burning on average, and so. It's the same kind of, um, please be going into this, um. Not trying to stuff it down anyone's throat right now, if we need to think about it, it's okay, but this one is a. It'll just keep getting through a long time, so this isn't any more expensive coming back on us, um, the sooner you do it, the sooner you save, so. Um, and that, and that's trying to be a show, but, you know, we're really close, it was really nice that he took that time. Just go through all this and, and put it up on, on a, on a red board, so. I didn't know it was gonna be that good, I didn't think he could hit those kind of numbers, so then I asked Marty, I said, what do you think, so, he said, well.
And, and for reference, we uh, spend, uh, last year, our electric uh, expenditures for high school is. Two hundred and six thousand, five hundred dollars, year before that, two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, so. Um, approximately seventy-five thousand dollars annual savings. Estimated savings for, we're bringing those, those are two, one board, one thirty.
So just a question, the Batteries Plus, is this a, somebody we already have a contract with, just looking at the dot?
Battery Plus is somebody that's just no different than a electric company that approached us years ago, um. So what they do is they do all the legwork and they collect all the rebates and we just ride the waves and make sure it's all done and. Um, they're still paying labor out, I'm sure he's making money somehow on the other side, um, but at those kind of numbers, I don't know how much, you know. You know, we've been waiting for year after year with, with a, uh, the electrical company that we had, no bad, bad relationships, but. I mean, now, if we push this button instead of waiting every year, I'm not a hundred percent sure how the consumer rebates really work, but it must be really tough, so, um. We're doing square footages and we're doing, you know, you have to bring the right, the right paperwork in to, to make it to work, so they're the professionals. They, they're trying to make money at it, so they bring the right numbers to us, I don't know what the right number is, I, you know what I mean, so. Um, you kind of trust out there a little bit, but when you start throwing numbers like that, that's hard for me not to bring it to you, so.
No, I think, I think it makes sense, uh, my only, my only wondering was really around. Since it's over the thirty thousand, are we supposed to competitively bid this, and I know they've already got some labor involved in collecting the data? Are there other electrical companies that would do this type of work?
I think this falls in like, uh, you know. Like the my deal pricing and all that, is, is, um, is what I thought when we were talking to rebate stuff.
This is more of a service. This is more of a service that they'll provide, they're. They're going out finding the contractors, filling out the paperwork and, and providing the LEDs. So, as a service, we don't have to competitively bid it. Similar to our, our audits. The, uh, legal counsel. But we, if we wanted to, yes, we could.
Good, yeah, not trying to beat that, you know, um. I just, you know, under here, it's a service that, you know, that's provided, um, so that's what, you know, that's how we presented it, so.
And I'm just, just thinking about it, unless I go, I'm gonna have to digest that for now, I'm just thinking through, like, if we were doing other work in the building. Where you have contractors, we probably would competitively bid that, I know this was a service, cause they're doing rebates and other things, but they are doing work in the building, so. And I'll have to think about that for a bit, that's, that's the only pause I have is, should it be competitively bid or not? Right, but I, I, I mean, I know you're interpreting that as a service, I understand where you're at, I just think, think about that.
And that's why we have you here, otherwise, you know, I just throw it down your throat and away we go. I already did that once this summer, I'm not doing it right now, and I do appreciate it, you know, the stadium lights at night, you turn the monitor on, so. I can't thank you all enough for that, so, along with the last five years of bond stuff, that's been crucial in the, in the beginning, when you all, uh. Proactive spending money early before we knew it was gonna happen, so it made us sound diamond everything, so. Uh, it's okay to process and think about it, if you think.
Any other wonders, we've got another read on this, so we've got a little time. Alright, okay, thank you. We will move on to discussion item H. Twenty twenty-five NSBA scholarship opportunity through Kent ISD, Scott has the information.
Yeah, so this is something that we have, um, uh, the ISD has shared with us before. Um, I think Misty took advantage of it once, didn't you go to Washington?
But then because of COVID, it got canceled.
Got it.
They're gonna do it just virtual.
Okay, well, Misty almost.
But I almost, I mean, the, everything was booked, but, so, but.
Yeah, so, um, this is a proposal that the Kent ISD, or this is something that Kent ISD offers to, to do on an annual basis. Uh, in your board, uh, packet, I did include a copy of the application, if you're interested, um. Fill out the application or reach out to me, I fill out the application, the, um, uh, National Association of School Boards Conference. Uh, it's an advocacy conference, uh, it's, uh, February two through the fourth. And, um, uh, what the scholarship would, uh, just ask you to provide a brief summary of. As to why you're interested in attending the scholarship, what the scholarship is for is for the conference fees. The district then would pay the other associated travel costs. So we would pay for the flight and pay for the, the lodging, uh, and the meals, that type of thing. But it is a neat opportunity, uh, and you'd also be able to attend with other, uh, board, school board members from Kent County, so that's a. A neat way to see and to learn, uh, as well. So let me know if you're interested in that, and I'll, uh, submit your information, uh, for the application, and then wait and see. Uh, but the deadline is, uh, the end of this month, so I think the deadline, uh, I'll double check with Mandy, but I think it was. Uh, October, is it November fifteenth?
So Scott or Misty, what, what type of things are they looking at, are they looking at proposed changes or legal environment, or what is it the conference kinda focuses on, you know?
It's all about advocacy, so it's, um, learning how to be an advocate, it's, uh. You have meetings with, uh, legislative representatives and. You know, they're, they're there to learn as much from you as you are to learn from them. Um, so it's an opportunity to engage and exchange ideas with legislators from all over the country. Uh, in addition to the legislators from Michigan that represent our state.
Alright, thank you, moving forward, we have twenty twenty-four, twenty-five student handbook updates.
So, um, this is not a normal time to be bringing forward student handbook updates or recommendations, but. Uh, two things, um, have come forward that, uh, we feel is important for us to. Uh, put this content into the handbooks, it's a very logical location for this information, there are. Uh, two items that are linked, um, so one is, uh, sexual harassment, sexual assault. Information that school districts are required by law in Michigan. To share with students, grades six through twelve. And what I've shared in Board Book is a memo from the Michigan Department of Education. With, um, the information that they recommend that districts, uh, or that they're, uh, to be in alignment with the law. Um, districts need to share this information, so, um, what I'm, uh, sharing with you is. Uh, you know, the, the template that the Michigan Department of Ed has put together, uh, in regards to this information, and what we would do is then. Um, you know, in, in the template, it gives you locations where, you know, you insert individual school districts. Information, Title IX coordinator, uh, information, that type of thing, so we would basically use the Michigan Department of Ed template. And include that information in our middle school and high school handbooks, uh, that are electronically available for our students. We'd also make that information available on the website, uh, for our students to access as well. Um, the other piece of information, uh, that's included in Board Book is, uh, just some content for students and for parents. Uh, around how Cedar Springs Public Schools approaches, uh, a, a threat, a student threat. And so it outlines our student threat assessment process, uh, it gives students, uh, information and parents' information as to. How we go about doing a threat assessment, um, who is involved in that threat assessment work. Um, and then potential outcomes, uh, from that, uh, from the team in terms of what recommendations we have. Moving forward, uh, once the threat has been, um, reviewed and, uh, and. I guess broken down, uh, so, so speaking, evaluated. Um, and we just thought that that would be important information for our students to have, uh, we would share that, uh, in our K, pre-K, uh, twelve handbooks. Um, because again, that's important information for all families to know, when a threat comes in, this is how Cedar Springs Public Schools responds. Um, we did share some content with all families back in August. Just in terms of overall safety and security protocols, um, but we felt that this was also important information to include. In our handbook, just to help people be more aware of how we're taking action in regard to providing. Uh, have, uh, higher, uh, levels of security, uh, resulting in a safer environment for students and staff. And guests on our campus. And again, this is just for review this evening, uh, we'll bring it forward, uh, for action in the future.
Any preliminary questions, we'll proceed this again.
Yeah, so I know this is just preliminary, the, uh, the back page of that first topic, so the, uh. Under the. Title, Title IX stuff, there's a template on the back for Great Lakes School District. Are we planning on filling out something like that for Cedar then, or using their template there, or, or are we planning on? Like what language are we proposing for the, for the handbook?
Um, let me get some details on that, then circle back.
I just got a comment, I mean, I, I, I really think this will be helpful to include, I mean, because I think a lot of parents do wonder and have questions. Or, you know, feel like we're doing nothing, or don't understand the process, and I feel like this gives some specific language and handles. You know, on what actually has happened, happening, um, so I, I think it'll be beneficial.
So for our next meeting, I'll get details and all the templates, so you'll be able to see exactly what it would look like for us.
Notes, preliminary. We'll move forward then to discussion item J, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, annual superintendent evaluation performance goals.
So, back in August, uh, we started talking, well, actually, when, when Mark Dovias came and. Uh, did, uh, workshop for superintendent evaluation, he outlined the goal setting process, uh, that the board. Uh, needed to agree upon for the superintendent evaluation, the annual evaluation. Uh, my recommendation is that we stay focused, uh, using our MyKid goals. Which are the goals that our buildings are, are working towards, uh, in terms of elevating student achievement. Uh, but also, uh, continuing to lean in to our flight plan goals, our, uh, three-year strategic planning goals. Um, and, and those target areas in terms of evaluating and reflecting on my overall performance. Uh, I also included in the, um, collection of slides, uh. It's some things in addition to the flight plan work and in addition to. The MyKids student, school improvement goals, um, just around some general organizational or business goals. So in addition to, uh, increasing, uh, student achievement, increase, uh, in addition to. Uh, really focusing in on our flight plan, our strategic plan, you know, we also wanna continue as an organization to. Increase the measures of security that we have in place, continuously evaluating our practices. Uh, and in making those practices more secure, more safe, uh, for our students, our staff, our guests. Uh, also really being mindful of our resource expenditures, whether that's human resources. Uh, how we're utilizing our people, space resources, how we're utilizing our facilities, but also financial resources, how we're utilizing our money. We wanna get the biggest return on investment possible in all of those allocations, and so that's very important for us as an organization. In order to be successful long term, um, and then just continuing to, uh, improve upon communication. Uh, as a district, uh, to continue to, uh, share the good word, whether it be general information, whether it be marketing materials. Uh, whether it be social media posts, just really trying to be better communicators, uh, with our students, with our families, with our community. Parents, um, and then lastly, um, you know, just bringing the bond construction home. Uh, making sure that we finish those projects, uh, we finish them under budget and, uh, and ahead of time, that's our, that's our plan. So that would be kind of the collection of things that I would recommend that my evaluation be based on, twenty-four, twenty-five.
We have this time for action tonight. Is there any discussion?
The only, the only thing that, I, I really like directionally, and I like, you know, like we talked about last time, seeing your heart and the direction for the district and, and where we see. Uh, opportunities for improvement, the only thing that, um, catches my attention is that these targets are for twenty twenty-six. So when we look at next year's performance, as we think about where we at, we don't have a goal per se for next year, so when we think about it, we'll just have to think about, are we tracking to. That result, so, uh, you know, I guess as we think about it, usually, I, I think about some, it kind of a parabolic curve, not necessarily linear.
Yeah.
So it'll be difficult to evaluate whether we're on track or off track again next year.
And the language in the, uh, the resource that we use to conduct the evaluation is. Uh, are you, are we making progress towards longer range goals? Uh, and so I think we would be, a- as long as we're showing growth in areas of student achievement, uh, tracking towards those goals. Uh, or if not, as long as we have plans in place that will, you know, get us headed in the right direction. Um, I think we're gonna be okay.
Yeah.
It's an, it's a, you know, an infinite game, we're never gonna get there, you know, we'll always wanna get better in what we're doing. Um, but I think it does give us some direction.
Yeah, that's why I say directionally, I'm on board, just, wait, when you think, you know, make or meet, you know, that's black and white, it's, it's, it's gonna be difficult, cause it's gonna be a little bit of a. A judgment call as whether we're tracking, so that's the only observation.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else is on for action tonight? Okay. Having no other discussion for that, we'll move to public comment, and this is the time that the board would hear from the public, but public comment for three minutes. And the board won't be responding, but we'll be listening and taking notes, and then we'll, the administration will be following up, so do you have any takers for public comment? There are three minutes. Yes, Dr. G, everybody? Everybody good? Calling for public comment. Having no takers for public comment with multiple offers, we will close that portion of meeting. And we'll move to the action portion of the meeting and the details, I'm gonna rely on my teammates, I did not write those. So I can have a complete motion, but let's start out with the twenty twenty-four National Future Farmers of America FFA Convention and Expo Trip.
I move to, uh, approve the, the two thousand twenty-four National FFA. Uh, convention and expo trip, I think it'll be a good, um, learning opportunity, so I suppose we accept it as presented.
Support.
Discussion. Having none, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Second action item for tonight is Costa Rica trip, summer twenty of twenty-five, I'll entertain a motion.
We'll just put the Costa Rica trip for the summer twenty twenty-five as presented.
For. And discussion. Having none, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item C, East Coast trip, summer twenty twenty-five, as we've had for multiple years, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the East Coast trip for the summer twenty twenty-five as presented.
Support.
Discussion. Having none, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item D, Superintendent twenty twenty-four, twenty-five goals, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept those goals as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, I'll call for the vote, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item E, general maintenance snow removal equipment purchase, I would entertain a motion.
So moved, as presented.
Support.
There are a few, so, how much?
The, uh, the John Deere compact tractor with the s- snow blower and a rear. Oh, uh, five-foot standard duty rear blade, uh, total equipment cost, which is MyDeal pricing. Um, purchasing it from Greenmark Equipment in Kent City, uh, total price is thirty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars. And ninety-five cents.
And the used loader not to exceed fifty thousand.
Correct. And then we will be looking to a, a pusher between. You pay to ten thousand. The loader.
Is that a missed motion, or is that coming back? No, that's part of this.
That's part of this.
Okay. Drop that, Vern.
Three pieces.
That was the ass perception.
I decided on your motion.
Yeah. Three pieces of equipment, one is for thirty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-three point nine five. The other is not to exceed fifty thousand, and the last one is, uh, not to exceed ten thousand.
Yes.
I'm being credit for motion, but we need support.
Alright, any discussion? Okay, none, we're going to vote, Vice President Schopner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, and I'm not looking forward to the first snow, but glad we'll be prepared. Okay, action, last action item for tonight is the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five annual superintendent evaluation and performance goals. I will entertain a motion.
I have a question, because didn't we just vote on that?
Yes.
I think we have a duplicate listing.
Oh, yeah, we do.
We meant to.
You know what that was?
Vote on the tax revolution.
No, that's next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Throw it on there twice.
Alright. I was having, I thought it was David O'Boo, but it was not, so.
Anything to do with the annual evaluation, because that is different slightly. I assume we're not doing.
Definitely new rule. Thank you, thank you, Shannon. That ends action, so that goes to, um, communication and. I don't have anything new for the board. You received any emails? I've forwarded them to you for your information. So I would turn it over to. Mr. Smith.
So we did, uh, receive notice from the Michigan School Public Relations Association. Um, that Ian Vanderluck and Evan Matson. Won, uh, an award for outstanding achievements. Uh, a merit award in the area of outstanding achievement, uh, in their podcast category for. Um, their Red Hawks rivals. Uh, Red Hawk Rivals Student Led Interactive Podcast Videos they submitted. And this was something that Amy McCarthy, uh, submitted their work, uh, or work, the work on their behalf. Uh, and they were acknowledged by their work by the Michigan Association of. Public Relations Association, so. And I don't know if any of you caught, Ian was also a part of the, uh. The W T V eight, uh, production that they had, uh, out here, uh, at the end of September and. Amazing, uh, to watch him. He was such a natural on camera. He said he was very nervous, uh, but he was so smooth and so put together. He's an exciting person to watch, he's.
Is that what he wants to do?
Yes.
You know?
Yeah. So there were several occasions when, uh, W T V eight personalities. Were encouraging him to reach out to them or let them know if there was anything that he needed. Uh, offered to help him tour the station if that was something that they wanted to do at one point.
They were banned.
Yeah, one of them told him that his work on the video that he did for that segment. Was actually better than some of the work that's done by actual staff or representatives. Yeah, if you watched the video, it was outstanding, so it was neat. It's neat to watch students, um. Really thrive in those areas.
Yes.
Can I just make a motion to strike?
Oh.
Actually, I don't, uh, we we never, like, actually, I know it's.
Sure. Okay, so we have a motion and a second and discussion, we're gonna strike after the item F.
Due to. Do we have to move to go back into the action item section? Before we do that?
We can make a motion at any time, so.
Okay.
So. All in favor, say aye. Here we go. Alright, so for planning our next board meeting is October twenty eighth. And if anything we've got coming up, you've got questions, um, go ahead and shoot those to Scott if you. Look at that policy or whatever, and something comes to you. But other than that, don't see me for a special meeting. Um, we'll see you on the twenty eighth, we stand adjourned at seven fifty-nine.